At seven o'clock, I'd like to call to order.
Interesting.
The Tuesday, August 20, meeting of the mound planning commission. This is a special slash rescheduled meeting. Call to order is over. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Archambault.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Heel.
Here.
Commissioner Wecker.
Here.
Commissioner McInerney.
Here.
Chair Good.
Here. You have in your packet the agenda for tonight's meeting. I do not believe we have any amendments. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion to approve as distributed?
Second.
Second.
Motion to second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. You have for you the July 2, 2024, regular meeting minutes. I assume you've had an opportunity to review them. They were in your packet. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Motion to approve as distributed?
Second.
We have a motion to second. We have discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Board of Appeals, adjustment, planning case number 24-10. Variance for accessory structure at 1703 Jones Lane. Applicant Jake Kohler. Ms. Reader.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, members of the planning commission, members of the public. I'm Rita Trapp, the city's planning consultant. The request, the first request this evening is a variance for an accessory shed slash garage at 1703 Jones Lane. The property is located on the corner on a lot of record at the intersection of Jones Lane and Three Points Boulevard. Currently, there is a single-family home with an attached two-car garage. That project, a house was built in 1984. In 2020, there was a fence height variance and a public lands permit granted to this property for the placement of a six-foot fence in the public right-of-way along Three Points Boulevard. The purpose of that was the, if you read the resolution, the findings related to that fence and that placement of that fence were related to the fact that it was on Three Points Boulevard, which is relatively busy. There is a bus stop at the corner. And then also, there's a topography difference between Three Points Boulevard and the property, and so they allowed a slightly taller fence than you normally would allow, just because that provides the privacy that they were looking for. This time, the applicant is requesting a variance for the construction of 440-square-foot accessory garage shed on a floating slab in the rear yard. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a 5.7-foot setback from the property line, and the variance is generally requested because of topography of the lot, and so I'll walk through those elements in a moment. Comprehensive plan-wise, this is guided low-density residential, which allows for single-family detached and attached housing types, and the property is being proposed to continue to be used as a single-family home. This is considered an R1, single-family lot of record. The accessory setbacks are based on the fact that Three Points is considered a front, just like Jones Lane is considered a front. So there's actually a 30-foot setback required for the front yards, so that's both streets. The interior side yard is six feet, and then the rear yard, which is the western property line, would be four feet. The lot is over 10,000 square feet, which is the minimum required for an R1 lot. The accessory structures in our residential districts are limited to the lesser 3,000 square feet or 15% of the lot. So for this lot, that's 1,583 square feet. They are proposing 440 square feet, so definitely under the size allowed, and I just wanted to note that in case that becomes important in our conversation. The front setbacks, as I said, are required on both Three Points and Jones Lane. They are proposing a setback that meets the rear yard. They are just not being able, or requesting the ability to move that garage closer to the Three Points part of their yard because of topography. The next slide talks a little bit better about that, the elevation of the property. It's about 950 feet on the southern property line, closer to where the garage is going to be. It's 942 feet. They certainly could make changes to topography. They certainly could take out trees. The question is whether or not it's reasonable that they might want to put the garage in this location as opposed to having to regrade and change the topography in their backyard and take out some of the existing trees. So that's the request before you this evening, is to take a look at whether or not shifting that garage closer to Three Points makes sense, given the topography of the lot, the fence that's already there, the busyness of the Three Points Boulevard street. Building height-wise, generally, not generally, the code requires residential accessory structures to be shorter than the principal building on the lot. Based on the information we've received from the applicant, which is generally reviewed at building permit time, the proposed garage will be shorter. It's about 11 feet to the midpoint as opposed to 18 feet for the house. The application was distributed in our normal and customary channels. We didn't receive any comments about this application. Before you, the general practice is to discuss the requests and then take one of the following actions, either table the request, recommend city council approve the request, or recommend city council deny the request. Staff had recommended approval and had findings of fact and conditions in the packet. I guess the only really notable condition probably that we had for this one is just making sure that it was clear that there wouldn't be any driveway to be accessed to this, that it is truly just a detached accessory garage shed in the rear yard, and there's not a driveway. We wouldn't want to see a driveway back towards Three Points, because that is the kind of street it is, and given the topography, that's not intended. So we wanted to see that as a specific condition to make sure that into the future, that's a clear standard. The rest of the conditions are customary to what we normally do. We certainly could add any other conditions if you feel like it is important. I know that the applicant is here, and I think I'm aware that there are some neighbors, so if you, it isn't a public hearing, but if you are willing to entertain it, there may be other individuals who would like to speak as well. With that, I can answer any questions.
How tall is the fence between the structure and the street?
The fence is six feet in height, but it is on the slope. Increases between the property and Three Points, so it's going to be at a higher elevation.
Okay.
Are you asking how much lower the slab will be than the street?
I would, I can look at that. I just can't answer it. I'd have to, zooming in on here isn't going to work. I'll bring up the plans, and I'll be able to answer that after.
No, my concern was just snow removal, but if there's already a fence, it sounds as though that's a moot point.
Yes, there's already a fence on the property. You can see it's kind of an X on the actual plans.
So, a question for you. So this is one of those.
In this location.
Mm-hmm. This is one of those lots that has two fronts, right?
Yes.
So if this, if the front was just where the driveway comes out over there, right?
If this was the front, this would be the rear, and this would be normally a side.
Would that be a five and five setback then? Or five and 10, or five?
The interior, I'm just going to make sure I have it.
Four and four.
The interior side yard is six feet, right? And the rear is four.
So.
If it's located between the front and the rear, or the front building line and the rear building line, it's six feet. If the structure is 100% behind the house, then it's four feet.
But that has to do with this.
Yes.
Part.
Yes.
So because of where it is, if this was not, and that was the street, it would be six?
Correct.
Okay. It's just important, those are little nuances. So it would be because of this.
Six and four?
Yeah. What?
It would be six and four, is what you're saying?
Four is the rear, six are the sides.
Okay.
There's some placement of the thing behind the structure, but it would be less.
Okay. So I think, you know, I don't, I don't like these ones where there's two, two fronts.
Two fronts. Yes.
Especially where it's not like a residential street where you're facing out both ways.
Right. It is a different street, a different type of street, given the busyness of it.
The fact that there's a fence there, you're never going to see.
Yep.
The shed, yeah. Okay. Do we know how far the setback is for the current shed that's there? Is this going to encroach further than the existing shed?
Well, the existing shed is right there, the edge of it.
Okay. So this would actually encroach further into the setback?
Correct.
Okay. Further questions for Rita? Further observations by the commissioner? Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. I understand there may be people in the audience interested in addressing commission. Let's do the applicant first. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you like to address the commission with any comments or observations or questions?
Um, fully.
Sir, if you, if you want to speak, please come forward, and please give us your name and your address.
Hey, my name is Jake Kohler, and I live at 1703 Jones Lane. My wife Sherry. The only thing I have additional is I have some pictures, if that would help, because it is a really tricky kind of property. Can I point over on the.
There's the laser in front of you with the yellow button.
Right there.
Yellow button. You push that, that'll help you. Because then you can speed into the microphone stuff.
So this, the reason, the existing shed sits right here, and the reason we're asking to go here is this big berm here, the elevation goes way, way up to where here, it's like 10 feet higher compared to our backyard right here. So this is very minimal dirt work, if you call it, compared if we had to dig into this and tear out three trees and dig way into this berm here. The fence sits up here. It's a little bit wider of a, what do you call it, right-of-way kind of compared to normal. There's like 11, 11 and a half feet from the property line to even the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk into Jones Lane. And it is a little bit different of a corner lot than some properties from, from that berm. And this, this sits, our flat here, which is where the shed would sit, once it's flat like this, is five feet lower than even the road. So when the shed is up, or the fence is another six feet up, so it's 11 feet up from the ground here. So the shed is really pretty hidden from any kind of visibility from the road or anything like that. And the only other thing I'd point out is we talked to our neighbors behind us up here. We met with them the other day, and just because it's kind of, their driveway comes out here, they had no issues whatsoever. They said they would be willing to come to the meeting if we needed them to, but they were, they had no issues with it since the fence is there anyways, so. But that's all I really have. I do have pictures, if that would help, kind of see, the pictures show a little bit about how steep this berm is here, how it's already kind of flat right here to put the shed there. Just makes the most sense, and I, I don't want to tear out, these are three big mature trees, and it is a pretty, really big berm that we'd have to do some pretty serious retaining wall work and some water drainage work.
Anybody on the commission want to see the pictures he's got?
Can I ask a question?
Sir?
So, on here, it looks like you're at five foot seven from the property line?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know how far you are from, is that from the fence, or is that from the property line, or?
So the property, it's from the property line, so.
So how far from the fence?
This is the property line right here. The fence is another seven and a half feet up here. This is the fence up here. That's seven and a half feet off our property line. So the fence actually sits on city property. So we went through the process to get that approval, and we did that because, again, the road is this much higher than our property, so if we put a fence down here, it wouldn't have done anything, so the fence sits up on that berm up there.
So when you're looking at it, you'll actually be 13 feet from the fence?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll be seven and a half, yeah, 13 feet from the fence. And then there's another four or four and a half feet from the fence to the sidewalk right here. They wanted that for the snow removal, as she asked. And in the back, the rear is a four, four-foot setback, like she, Ms. Trapp said, a four-foot, and we're going to stay five feet off the back rear yard.
Is this where the trampoline is?
Yes, sir. Well, real close, the trampoline sits right here.
Okay. I drive by it every day, so.
Yeah. We, I mean, we, we're obviously here because we want the shed.
Right.
We won't dig into this hill. If you guys tell us that's what we have to do, then we probably would not do it, because I'm not going to remove these trees, and I would be concerned digging into the hill like here in the neighbor behind us as well, I guess, and putting up a retaining wall, that would be nine, 10 feet tall in our backyard. Right now, our retaining wall right here, because this hall slopes up, like this is 10 feet higher than right here, this retaining wall is probably three and a half feet tall, and then as it works its way down here, because that berm goes like this, and it goes through the shed, it's only about one or two feet tall right here. So to put the shed there, we're just going to dig out a, we would just dig out a foot or two of dirt.
Anything further for the applicant? Thank you. Are there others in the audience that would like to speak to this proposal? We need your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Sundell, and I reside at 1717 Jones Lane, Mound, Minnesota.
Thank you.
We're here tonight due to a letter we received from the city notifying us of a variance request for the construction of an accessory structure next door at 1703 Jones Lane, the Kohlers' property. As most of you may recall, my wife and I spent considerable amount of time last summer requesting a variance permit, followed by an expansion permit for the remodel of our primary residence. We are a little beyond surprised to see the Kohlers pursuing another variance request for their property, given the veracity of their issue with us pursuing a variance for our home remodel project. In 2022, the Kohlers were also granted a variance to add the fence that's been discussed tonight. They have that fence out in city right-of-way, not on their property. As the Kohlers have stated before in planning commission meetings with this planning commission, they are fully aware of their property and their setbacks, as they understood all of these before they purchased the property back in 2009. Both our requests, both of our requests previously for the initial variance and expansion permits were denied on the following basis by the planning commission and confirmed in a split vote by the city council. There were other construction design options to be considered, which would alleviate the need for a planning commission or a city council to issue a variance or expansion permit. Every option brought up to, by our neighbors, planning commission, and the city council were far less reasonable in the scope of work needed to be done, as well as the cost that became prohibitive for us as homeowners. Cost is not a consideration for practical difficulty. As stated in City Code, section 129-2, paragraph 3, economic considerations do not constitute a practical difficulty. Furthermore, architectural limitations imposed on our existing home, remodel costs due to those limitations, management of onsite property, financial burdens such as removal of existing landscaping, trees, extensive grading, an existing garage that could not accommodate our truck due to its size, and did not, none of these constituted practical difficulty. A very specific example is, it was brought, it was thought reasonable by this group here and city council for us to remove two 85-foot maple trees to accommodate your requested design differences for our expansion permit and variance permit. So the staff thought it was reasonable for us to remove two 85-foot trees to move forward with our plans. The Kohlers have other options for the accessory structure. Can we see exhibit one, please? On this exhibit here, this is the lot survey for the Kohlers' property. This spot right here, as we've seen before, is where they're proposing to put their accessory structure. There's many other options. I spent 20 minutes thinking about it. They could, option number one is just simply add on to the back of their garage. Option number two would be change the layout of their accessory structure, make it a little deeper, not as wide. Option number three would be just move it all, so it's all, no variance needed, not any setbacks that are following the setbacks in the variance, the ordinance that's set forth by the city. The use of our existing home footprint could not be used or maximized as originally designed in our remodel plans, as seven feet of our existing garage was considered non-conforming. In spite of the language within the city code, allowing construction to top, allowing construction on top of non-conforming structures. Everybody told us we had to go back and redesign because we had other options. To issue a variance expansion permit is to extend special privilege. This is direct feedback from both the planning commission and the city council. The concern was that you did not want to set that precedence. Kohlers have already had one variance for their fencing. Now they're asking for another variance. They fully understood all their setbacks on their property, back when they bought their property in 2009. Specifically, the precedence of extending special privilege where there are no other options. It was further stated, where does it all end? If we do this, where does it all end? Variance expansion permits are to be considered only where the homeowner is asking for the minimum, where the scope of the project is concerned, not the maximum. This accessory structure plan surely is not the minimum. An accessory structure can be built with a slope in landscaping in the backyard, as we've done on our property. Can I see the next exhibit, please? Ms. Trapp mentioned that, per the lot survey on the Kohlers' property, the southwest corner was elevation 950, the northwest corner is elevation 942. That is an eight-foot difference, not a 10-foot difference that the Kohlers mentioned. It's an eight-foot difference from corner to corner. This is our property. Kohlers' property is just in the north of ours. This area right here, that berm that the Kohlers are mentioning, we've excavated into that berm, we've removed a couple of trees, and we stayed compliant. We had those options. We made those choices. If we wanted this shed that bad, we made those choices to do that work. They surely have options to do, to do the same. We're here tonight to confirm that this planning commission remained consistent in their messaging to not only our neighborhood, but our community, and what they can expect when they approach you as a sitting elected committee in matters that pertain to interpretation of the city variance code. We come here tonight certainly encouraging continued property improvements in our community. That said, our recent time and experience with you is such that we clearly see this project accomplished by simply a building permit. This would mirror the same process we have followed with respect to the construction of an additional garage on our backyard. We're confident that if held to the same standards as our recently completed remodel project, the variance expansion permit being requested would not rise to the rigor required by the planning commission for a variance or expansion permit to be granted. There is a high level of subjectiveness to this process of pursuing a variance, and navigating it is not easy. The optics to this are very visible to our community, and consistency is a key to level-setting the bar, so we as residents can appropriately better be guided in what we expect in these matters. In closing, I ask myself, why are we here tonight? There's no variance needed. The Kohlers have plenty of room to the south of their proposed accessory structure location. Could change the dimensions of their plans. They could easily do an addition to the backside of their garage to create additional storage room. They have options. Furthermore, their plan is surely not the minimum. A variance states that it's to be used as a minimum plan. A variance is also for those that don't have options. The Kohlers have other options, as stated earlier. They could simply use a building permit for this addition. Thank you.
We have questions for the speaker. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Others in the audience that would like to address this request?
Can I speak one more time?
We'll give you one more shot. Come on forward.
So I understand John's comments. Just, I do have the survey here. It is 10 feet up on the back compared to the bottom. It's 10 feet down. I think one of the major differences in my mind when I looked at this case, I, I had a hard time. I was going to apply for this last year, and I had a hard time, because I was asking myself, what's the difference between what I'm asking for and what they were asking for? And there, in my mind, there was two major differences. One, they went and excavated this entire hill and ripped out all the trees and excavated before they even came to the city. So they had this gigantic hole in their backyard with plenty of room to do their addition backwards, and there was multiple neighbors that did not like what their proposal was going to look like in the neighborhood, and it obviously impacted us. What I'm proposing here impacts nobody. It doesn't impact them at all. It doesn't impact any neighbors at all. That's it. I guess that's just, those were the two big differences I saw, was they had already excavated everything. Can we already admit it? Yeah, we can do that. I can go excavate, tear out trees, and put in a 10-foot retaining wall. I'm not going to do that. It wouldn't even look good on our property. And it doesn't impact anybody else.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I guess I do have one more question, since you're up. Is there a reason why you couldn't just move it so you're totally six feet from the, I don't know what side it is, north side?
Yeah.
And angle it a little bit?
Yeah, so this, so the side setback, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, back here, if this wasn't a front, a corner lot.
Right.
It's actually four feet back here. It's six feet if you're building on the side of your house up here, or, yeah, and it's, and it's four, but it's four feet when you're in the rear of your yard.
No, but that's a side yard setback.
Yeah, so the, sorry, so the side, this would, would normally be four feet.
But you just said it was six.
I know, that's what I was talking about. She's, she's saying it's, it's four.
So garages that are, if this was a, a straight interior lot.
Correct.
Non-lakeshore, non-thru-lot. If the garage is located between the front building line and the rear building line, Jake, maybe if you can kind of show that on the, uh.
It's the corners of.
The corners of your house.
Yeah.
Nope. In front. That one and that one, then it would be six feet. If it's 100% behind that line, then it's four feet.
But it's not 100%.
It's not.
Behind it.
She's talking from front to back.
From front to back.
From this way.
Oh.
If you tried to locate a side yard next to your house, you have to be farther away from the side.
If I tried putting a shed right here, it would have to be.
So the side yard setback would be four feet? If this is an interior.
In that location, behind the house, it would be four feet if this wasn't a corner lot, where it's, where it's shown as.
So if this is an interior, it would be conforming?
Yes. Yes. It was an interior lot.
I thought we were off by five inches. Okay.
Yeah.
Confused.
And we did work with the staff to kind of minimize, again, we, you know, originally we wanted to be back further this way. We don't want to be five feet off, but we understand there's also utility easement there, so instead of doing the four feet, we did the five feet. And we could, we could move further this way. It's just, if I go any further this way, I have to start tearing out mature trees. I don't want to do that.
Well, I was asking, because I thought it was a six-foot, if it was an interior, not a four-foot.
Yeah, so if it wasn't for this, it would be four feet here.
Got it.
Requirement.
Okay. Further questions for the applicant? Okay, further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion within the commission. Excuse me?
Can I speak?
One more time, and briefly.
I just would like to clarify a few things. They mentioned, Sarah, I think maybe you're not aware of this, but this rear property line here, there's a drainage utility easement there, requiring people to be five feet back within the structure. That's a requirement, not four feet. One other statement is, again, the Kohlers bought this property in two thousand nine. They've told us with this Planning Commission how extensively they understood their setbacks on their property when they bought it. They actually thought that maybe we should've done our homework better when we bought our house. But they showed us, told us how much they understood their lot setbacks. But yet, they wanna talk about this that, like, it's an interior lot. It's not, it's a corner lot. They have a thirty-foot setback on this side, and they have a thirty-foot setback on this side. Yet they're requesting to put it into that setback position. It's not needed. They have other options, you guys.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, discussion amongst the commission. Anybody have any observations or questions?
I'm not sure if I'm the only one, but if I am, I'll take the, the fall here. Rita, can you rehash for us what, so if this was not a corner lot, it would, this would be conforming, but because it is a corner lot, the setback is what again?
Thirty.
Okay.
And actually, um, that's what thirty feet, just so you know, looks like with the same-sized garage. Not that, just because the other diagram that was up there was not correct, it was saying as if the house, this is twenty feet off, this is thirty feet approximately, so if we had to move it to thirty feet, that's where it would be on the lot. Um, so, what we were saying was, if this was an interior lot, it's four and four, because it's located behind the house, and we're saying behind the house from the perspective of the front of the lot, going backwards. And so right now, it's thirty feet, because it is a corner lot, and that's what the accessory structure setbacks say, is that it needs to follow the principal structure setbacks, principal structure setbacks, say, on a corner lot, you need to have the house setback both dimensions, um, from it.
What is that blue item there? Sorry, I can't see it on the map.
This one?
To left.
No, to the left.
This?
Yeah.
This one?
Yeah, yep.
I just took, I drew the size of this and said, if you were gonna put it at thirty feet, so this is twenty feet, this is ten feet, based on the survey, I'm just using what the measurements are, that would mean thirty feet back would be here, just for perspective. So it's the exact same size, and this is where it would impact in the yard. I just wanted it to be accurate, since the other diagram showed it at this point, and if it was at this point even with the house, it would still need a variance, because it's twenty feet back and the requirement is thirty feet back. So just shifting it to be even with the house doesn't accomplish the, a conforming structure. Does that make sense, or did I make it worse?
So the option would be, the bottom left-hand corner, smooth that out, take out the trees, right?
Yeah, excavate.
Excavate.
Excavate, put up a retaining wall. Yes.
That's one option.
Yep.
Leave it where it is, given the variance. Just deny it.
Those are all...
It's kind of the three options I see.
The options would be to approve it at the variance that they requested, or you deny it, and if you deny it, then they have the option to do whatever they would like.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I believe the applicant said that they had pictures that they brought with them. Would we be able to, um, have an opportunity to just kinda look through those? I would just like to get a view of the photos they have.
How are we gonna show these pictures?
I think I have to put them on my computer.
I thought he said he had them. Oh, I thought they were physical.
He's got a thumb drive.
Oh, he's got a thumb drive.
Yeah.
Makes you not viruses.
Yeah, I was thinking they were physical.
Yeah, this side, it was just not like anything.
That's not...
Yep.
Mm-hmm. That is a big retaining wall.
Is that, uh, existing structure, this, gonna be the same height as?
So the, the plan was, this, this shed was there when we bought the house.
Uh-huh.
So, sorry.
Just as a metaphor. It's okay.
Um, this shed was here when we bought the house, so the, the plan is to do the least digging into this berm. This berm at our property line is ten feet, but it goes way steeper up here. It goes really high, up to the neighbors. I don't know the exact elevation, but I'm guessing if this is ten feet higher than here, it's at least fifteen or twenty. It's a really steep hill. So the plan is just to knock out this little bit of dirt right here that the existing shed is sitting on, and then put it on this ground here, which is flat and level on the backyard already. So the shed would kinda come out to this stake here and sit right here in the little corner of the property. As you can see, I guess, if you go back...
I guess my question was, your existing shed is what, what, what height? Where's your new shed height gonna be?
Yep, sorry, the exist, this one is, uh, this retaining wall right here is probably two feet tall, and then this shed's like eight and a half, so it's probably ten and a half feet tall. And again, over on the side here, this, this, over on this side, the berm goes way up again to the road, so right here, this ground right here is sitting four to five feet below three points over here. So by putting the shed right here, it's pretty much, pretty much hidden by, by the, you would see the rooftop a little bit of, of the new shed, you know, you'd probably have a foot or two of this peak that would maybe stick above the fence. But I just, again, if, if we look at the other pictures in that berm, I just, it, it just doesn't make any sense on this property to tear out these trees.
Are those the trees that would be removed, I'm guessing?
These are, these three trees would have to be removed, and we'd have to dig in to this. As Rita put a drawing, to, to not have a variance, we'd have to be probably way over here. And we'd have to dig out these three trees, and we'd have to excavate back to where this is about ten feet tall compared to this ground right here. We'd have to excavate back and put, um, put a retaining wall in there. I'm not here to say that that's not doable, I just don't think it's reasonable with this property, and I think if anybody came and looked at it, they would agree, but that's just my opinion, obviously.
When I, when I look at this, and I'm responding to your neighbor who was just up here, I kinda feel like the two asks were different, and I feel like what the Kohlers are asking for will be less impactful in your view than it would be if they moved it over and dug into the, to the berm to place it, to make it conforming. Does anybody else have a feeling about that?
Well, I, I'm not sure if the view was part of the issue, but for me, I, I do appreciate seeing the photos, 'cause again, I think when we talk about the land use piece and the, the hardship piece, it does help me to see kind of, you got a complicated yard. I mean, I'm not gonna lie, and I think, I, I can appreciate your neighbors' concerns as well in making sure that we're consistent, but again, I don't think it's an apples-to-apples comparison on the previous project that they were requesting versus this one. Um, so that's kind of where I'm leaning in my decision-making process on this one, but yeah, I think for me, seeing the visual has helped me kinda get a, an idea of kinda the complexity of this yard.
But why wouldn't you just expand that area, that footprint there? Is there a reason why just to put some more filter in there and build a larger shed? Is there a reason you couldn't do that?
Out, out this way?
No, just, yeah, where it is right now, just expand it a little bit and build a bigger shed there. Why do you have to bring it down onto the lower level?
Well, I, we could, um, th- this shed is already a non-conforming structure, so it's already, when we, it was there when we bought it, it's already not meeting the setback requirement.
So you're gonna build two, you're gonna have two sheds?
No, no, we would remove this one. We would remove this one, and where this edge of this shed is, the new one, that's where that edge would go again.
Okay.
To, to avoid digging into this any further.
If you didn't dig down, it would just be a two feet higher. That's all the difference.
Yes.
Yeah, but it, but as you go to this side...
To the right side.
To the right side, it drops down.
Right, so you just couldn't put filter in there?
So I either gotta fill it in and build it up, but then the shed would stick up way higher than my fence, or I just dig, yeah, there it is. I'd either have to fill all this in.
Either way, because it's non-conforming, you'd have to have a variance.
Okay.
And as soon as you try to make that existing shed bigger in size...
Right.
You're, he's in front of you anyway, so...
Okay.
It doesn't, there's no way to do it.
Because it's non-conforming.
Because it's non-conforming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions for the applicant? You have any other pictures you wanna show us?
Um, we can flop through them quick and see if there's anything that catches your eyes. I mean, that's kinda just the front view. Again, the plan is to dig this out and put the shed there, is what we would propose.
I think I hit the last one. Uh, I think I fit all the pictures. Unless, oh, yeah, if it all, there's others. Did I miss any one? I paged through them.
Will that current tree, um, in the new plan remain, or is that one gonna have to be?
This one right here?
Taken down, yeah, and then there's a smaller one to the right of it.
My wife, very sadly, would have to help me move it. We don't, this is more of a, what's it called?
Limelight hydrant tree.
Limelight, it's probably a shrub that's a side, but we're gonna keep it and move it. Same with that one.
Okay, further questions or observations? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, further discussion by commission members.
Well, I guess, my biggest thing is, I don't, I've told this before, I don't like how we have the zoning for these lots like this in the corner one. I think we've had this a couple times on, like, Tuxedo and Wilshire, this exact same thing, where someone wanted to build something over there, and it's like, no one's ever gonna be coming on to Tuxedo or Wilshire from that side, so why do we have it as a front? It doesn't make, doesn't make any sense to me, so...
I'll note it. We're doing code changes, right? So maybe we look at certain size of roads and look at it differently.
Right.
Versus the neighborhood street, but...
Because it's different if you're on a, a street where there's, it's not three points or it's not Tuxedo or Wilshire.
Right, where you have houses that are fronting the same way.
Residents are right across the street and everything like that.
Yep.
Like, if I, if this changed for a little bit for me when you said that if this was an interior, it'd be totally conforming.
Yep.
Which is the way I look at it when the, when three points is right there.
Okay. We'll note it, 'cause we're making the code changes anyway, so...
And I don't know how you distinguish that, if you're doing it by the size of the street, the volume of traffic on the street.
Well, I have to look at it, it might be, they, if we're lucky, all of these kinds of streets have the same functional classification, and then you can look at functional class.
Oh.
I just don't know off the top of my head if that's true.
Yeah.
But that's the easiest route, is to say, anything that's a collector street and above is different than a local street.
Oh.
But we'll look at a map.
What's, what's a collector's street?
It's a street that's intended to connect the neighborhood streets and have, that's like a three points, a Wilshire, a Tuxedo, I just don't know if all of them are classified that way, and they're the busier roads.
Okay.
Um, and that's, it's in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
So I could actually find out in a moment if I work through it, but, um, that would be the, if it worked out, that would be the easiest, and we just have to see what other streets are classified that way.
So I guess it would be if, if it was a collector's street and their driveway was not on that collector's street.
Could be.
It was on a reson, that, that's what I view it as.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I understand, and we're doing those code changes anyway, so we can certainly add it, and then you can consider it.
Okay, any further questions or comments for Rita? Okay. You see on the board, um, the three actions that the commission could take, recommending approval to the City Council, tabling for further information, or recommending non-approval to the City Council with specific reasons why. You see on page thirteen of your packet that staff has recommended approval of this request with six conditions and three findings of fact.
I have a, I guess I just have a question. I mean, if, if, nobody's seeming to jump on this motion here, so it leads me to believe that we're all kinda still thinking about it, but if we were to table it and request special information, I can't think of anything that I would need, um, to make a decision, so I'm not sure if there's other folks who are considering tabling and looking at specific information or additional information.
Yeah, I can't think of any additional information. I mean, I think, that all the information we need, we just need to make a decision. That's what we're here to do.
I guess I, I'd be willing to make a motion, I was just looking at the, the stuff in here, because I was trying to see if we could actually put something in here about you guys reviewing the corner lots for collector's streets?
That would be better, I would like to separate those.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I can, my, I already wrote it down, so like, in my, I don't know if you know, but between now and the council meeting, we do an executive summary, and it says, Planning Commission, discuss these things. I can put that in there, but it really doesn't belong in the motion, per se, um, 'cause we'll, we'll put that on our list of code changes.
That's a separate work.
Totally separate, but I will capture the comments, and it'll be in the minutes and in the discussion to the council as to some of the discussion you had, so, so that it, they understand that that was some of the thoughts that went into it.
Okay. Well, I guess, everyone knows my view. I, I view it as an interior lot, so I would make a motion, but I'll leave that to someone else if they want to. I don't know if everyone else has the same feeling or not.
Go ahead, make your motion.
Yeah, we'll start.
I will make a motion to approve Planning Case Two-Four-Dash-Ten, Condition for variance Request for accessory structure, given the, the, uh, conditions one through six and findings of fact one through three.
Okay, you've heard a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, seconded by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to go on the record as, I think I was the lone vote who approved the previous of gentlemen's barriers.
I did too.
You did too?
I think so.
We both, her and I were going on, so...
Arden?
What Mr. Keel said was that he and potentially a whacker were the ones that recommended approval of the next-door neighbors.
Right, so I want consistency.
Yeah. I think there's, 'cause I do think the consistency piece, and I, I do wanna bring that up, because I do think as a commission, we do try to be consistent, and we need to be mindful about consistency, and that was part of my thought on requesting specific information, again, to make sure that as we're reviewing these things, we are consistent from case to case, but as I noted previously, with this particular case, I do think that the practical difficulty was met in the Kohler yard, just again, based on the, that, so I, I mean, it's two different cases, but again, I, I actually appreciate you coming to the meeting, I appreciate you challenging us on the consistency and making sure that we are being accountable for that, so I don't know how we capture that or how we can, you know, further ensure that.
Different sized shed, it's quite large.
We're not gonna have further discussion about this. We're done. We haven't had a motion, it's been approved. I think that Commissioner, uh, was just making an, an observation, um, and you're certainly welcome to go to the City Council and express your concerns. Uh, this is not an action that is, um, a fait accompli by, uh, Planning Commission, it's a recommendation to City Council. They will take that up either at the August twenty-seven or September ten meeting, and I'm sure Sarah will let you know, uh, which... or September ten meeting, and I'm sure Sarah will let you know which meeting that will be. With this going forward, correct?
Yeah, Rita and I were just talking about that. Um, we're not certain if it, if we can turn that for next Tuesday. If, if we're able to, um, we would send out notices tomorrow. Otherwise, it would go to the first meeting in September.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Planning case two-four-dash-one-one. Sixty-five-eleven Bay Ridge Road. Applicant, John Schleddi of Minnesota Decks. This is a review slash recommendation, variance for a new slash replacement deck.
All right. Just making sure I have the right one up. All right. Uh, this is a request for a variance, uh, as was stated on Bay Ridge Road. Uh, the property is located south of Bartlett Boulevard. It's near the intersection of Bluff Lane, uh, where Bay Ridge and Bluff Lanes comes together. This is a lake shore lot and it also is a bluff lot. Um, the bluff actually extends most of the lot. Um, and so that's just notable in terms of, it's, uh, difficult to do anything, uh, in the rear yard without impacting the bluff. Currently, there is a single-family home with an attached garage, and the applicant is requesting the variance to replace an existing deck that's on the property. Uh, this is a low-density residential property, um, so the continuing use as a single-family home is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. It is an R-one lot, um, it is considered a lot of record, uh, and it is a shoreline lot, subject to the lake shore setback of fifty feet. And as I said, almost the entire house is in a bluff, which impacts, um, the ability for them to do any construction outside of the bluff area. Uh, as you know, the lake shore setback is fifty feet. The existing deck is forty-seven point nine feet from the lake shore. The new deck is proposed to be closer at forty-three point two feet from the lake shore. This is a bird's eye view of the deck. Um, I was having struggles describing it, so hopefully you looked at the picture, 'cause it wasn't the easiest one to describe. I just didn't want you to think it was a rectangular deck. It's kind of a rectangular with a little extra. Um, so the deck, um, is coming out sixteen feet, goes across thirty feet, and then kind of goes at an angle to connect to the staircase that's going down the side of the house. Um, there's also a side elevation and rear elevation. Hopefully you saw those in the packet. Um, they just kind of explain the why a little bit. Um, so there are some windows on the back of the house and some of the design and placement of the deck is related to where those windows are to try and make sure, um, that it makes sense with the railings, um, and then also the side elevation. Uh, one element that the applicant mentioned is they wanted to use standard-sized joists instead of having to do a custom. Um, and that's one of the reasons for the extra dimension. It's a little bit longer. The current deck is only fifteen feet, this one is sixteen feet. Um, and so that is the applicant's, uh, explanation for why, for this property. The other element that's a little unique to this property, um, is that the standard ordinary high water levelation, which we all know is nine-twenty-nine-point-four. They were unable to find the exact, where that exactly was, and so there's actually, uh, an edge, uh, of water line, water level that's used, um, based on a different dimension. It's, uh, the nine-twenty-nine-point-eight-three feet. So we're proposing the setbacks from that line, given the fact that that's a higher elevation, this is always the fun part. Higher elevation than nine-twenty-nine-point-four, that means it's closer to the house, which means if you set back these numbers from that number, it'll actually be farther away if you went back to the nine-twenty-nine-point-four. The only reason, I really didn't wanna even talk about this, I'll be honest. The only reason I mention it is that I added a condition that said, the setback number that if you approve this, the setback number is to that nine-twenty-nine-point-eight-three, because we don't wanna see that shift in the future, where we get the nine-twenty-nine-point-four and then we do the setback from that number. So it's the only reason I bring it up, is that in the conditions, we said that it's related to that, uh, number. And the applicant may be able to provide more information as to the why, um, but that's what we have, and I think it, we can still work with it. I just wanna make sure that it's set into the future. Um, hardcover-wise, hardcover allows forty percent. Um, the proposed, um, hardcover is thirty-seven point eight percent. Um, there is a little bit of discrepancy relative to just the quarter inch spacing for the deck and staircase. It'll all be worked out. We're close enough that we are fine and under at the thirty-seven point eight percent. Oops, I went too far. Okay. Public and staff agency review, it was distributed as a standard. Um, generally, we received no comment. The only comment we did receive from, was from Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. Uh, and because of the type of project it is, uh, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District had no comment as well. Again, this is a variance, so it is not a public hearing, um, but there may be folks in the audience that would wish to comment. Similar to the previous, uh, your three typical actions of tabling, if you need more information, recommending approval or denial. Staff recommended approval just because it's a fairly straightforward replacement, and there are some extenuating circumstances related to the design of the house, um, and they're not making, uh, a significant change relative to it. Um, but certainly, the applicant can answer more technical questions, I can answer general questions. Um, and we have kind of proposed, oh, I didn't put proposed findings of fact, um, so that I do have them. They are pretty standard. Um, just the idea that the criteria of the variance are being met, uh, replacing a deck is relatively, um, typical. And it is reasonable in our mind to construct a deck that's trying not to block the windows and not affect that, and also wanting to use standard. Um, while economics alone can't be a consideration, it is a factor that we can use. It's just we can't have just the reason, um, for that, for why you can or cannot do something.
So that's about four findings of fact.
I put the last two as, they're up here on the screen. I put the two combined.
Okay.
Because they're both, but.
So there's three?
Yeah.
All right.
I could make them four, but.
Nope.
I wrote them as three.
We're good.
And I can put them back up when you want.
I was just trying to keep a tally.
Yes, yes. That makes sense. So with that, I can answer any questions that folks may have.
So, I guess it's unclear of me. Are we here because we're going from fifteen to sixteen feet? Is that one foot difference? If they just ripped off the old deck? Or maybe I don't see a picture of what the old deck was? The old one was fifteen feet deep, this one sixteen.
Summary says we're going from forty-seven point nine to forty-three point two.
Yeah, there's an extra distance in there.
That's what I'm not, seeing where that is.
Yes.
Is it on the side? I don't understand where that is.
I had, we had, the numbers that we have on the survey, oops, sorry, I'm moving around. Show that difference in that number. The description, um, from, you know, from, this is the survey. You can see that it's sixteen feet. Um, I, but the numbers are showing different numbers. I don't have the explanation as to totally why. I agree with you.
Okay.
As something we've, I feel like I've been trying to clarify, but I've always been not being able to clarify it. But I do use survey numbers because they are done by a licensed engineer. So that's what I've been focused on, was the number is going to increase and we are going to have only forty-three point two feet. So that may be an, uh, question the applicant can answer.
Okay, further questions or com, or comments for Rita? Okay, hearing none. Is Mr. Schleddi around?
Yes.
Could you come forward, sir? Please state your name and your address.
John Schleddi, twenty-nine-thirty County Road, one-on-one South. I'm here for sixty-five-eleven, if that's what we're asking, Bay Ridge Road.
Okay.
It's the yellow button on the.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have comments about the proposal?
Um, the, I think that the question might be is simply that it was a little bit of an angle here as opposed to the lake. And so there was a, a question of, as we come, uh, one of the lot, or the setback lines is here, and then the new depth is the forty-three. I believe this is what was quoted several pages back. So that might account for the, the, the question about the one-foot difference, but there's approximately a three-foot difference, if that's making a diff, uh, if that's explaining it very well.
So, do I understand you to say that the new deck will be one foot larger?
Correct.
In the direction of the lake?
I call it deeper.
Deeper than the existing deck?
Correct.
Okay.
And the existing deck has this area here, and, um, and then we're coming over, squaring this off a little bit in here.
So that part that says, that's a trapezoid that says deck, is that all the bigger the deck is right now?
Uh, it is here and here.
It's a two-level.
Oh.
Hmm.
Correct.
'Cause nowhere on here do you really see what the old deck looked like, right? That's, that's where I'm getting lost on it. Okay. So is the old deck not squared off on the right side?
Uh, right here is an angle, and then here's another.
Oh.
And then it has the same, and by the way, the, the reason for this little small angle here is, uh, landscape steps come down immediately to the side.
So that's probably what the difference is, because you're angling up like the closest corner.
Okay, questions for Mr. Schleddi?
Did I understand you to say it's a two-level deck? Or did I misunderstand?
The existing one is two-level. We are going to bring it up. We'll be stepping out onto a platform and then down a couple of steps. But the, the original, so.
That's, if you look here.
Right there.
Then you can see it better.
So you're gonna step down and then everything will be leveled?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's one, it's one deck, it's not?
Right. And the elevation of this, um, of the home, to be able to see the water line, it's nice to drop that, the level of the deck down a little bit, so they can, they're sightlines.
Okay, further questions? Observations?
I think I have a question for staff. So there's discussion in the packet about the house or the deck needing, I think, wider to accommodate the window setup in the home. Is that, is the, the new deck gonna be wider?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's not part of our consideration. We're just talking about the depth with respect to the lake shore. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the, the wider doesn't really factor in because they are okay on the side, setback yard, it's just the lakeside.
Okay.
So it's really the depth limit that affects it. However, what I heard, um, the applicant mentioned is that the width of it may have what triggered the change in the setback because the wider part now is closer to the lake, 'cause the lake shore is uneven. So that width may have what triggered the three feet difference, even though it's only one foot deeper.
That makes sense.
And it is very hard to see that on that diagram.
Okay, further questions, further observations? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the audience want to approach the commission regarding this proposal? Okay, seeing none. You have your standard three options. You might note on page twenty-five of the packet that staff has recommended approval of this planning case with seven conditions and three findings of fact. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll just make a comment. I, I think, um, my general philosophy is I'm fine with what people wanna do on their property, on these sort of minor details, as long as it doesn't impact neighbors or the neighborhood. And to me, I think that was kinda key in the last case as well. If these folks wanna expand this deck a little bit, and, you know, I guess the math makes it sound like it's four feet bigger, but in reality, it's one foot bigger. That seems devenous to me. I have no problem with it.
So is that a motion?
I guess if the chair's still looking for a motion, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that the Planning Commission, uh, recommend approval to the city council in planning case twenty-four-dash-eleven, if I'm reading that right.
Correct.
Adopting the findings of fact as proposed by, um...
It's on the screen, findings of fact.
Uh, the proposed findings of fact provided by staff along with the conditions, um, outlined in the packet, which would include working with staff to make sure hardcover concerns are addressed. I think there are one, two, three, thank you, seven.
Seven.
Conditions. That was clumsy, but I got through it.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And again, we are looking probably to a city council meeting in September. Am I correct, Sarah?
Uh, either August twenty-seventh or September ten.
Okay. All right.
We will reach out, uh, if we're able to turn, turn it, we would reach out with mailings tomorrow for the Tuesday meeting. We just have to see where our schedule lies, but we're going to try, um, to, we recognize that it's almost, uh, September.
Okay.
For all the cases.
Unbelievable. All right, planning case number two-four-dash-one.
If you haven't signed in, please do so. Thank you very much.
Planning case two-four-dash-one-two. This is, uh, an expansion permit for remodel slash house additions. Five-oh-three-two Edgewater Drive, applicant Max Windmiller of Windmiller Design Studios. Miss Rita.
All right. As you noted, this is an expansion permit. I think the last two were variances, so that's a slightly different criteria. Uh, this property is located on Edgewater Drive, near the intersection of Edgewater Drive and Rosedale Road. The house and the garage, which were constructed in nineteen ninety-four, are non-conforming, uh, as they are located eight-point-nine feet from the east side property line, uh, which is the reason for the request. Uh, they are proposing actually a number of improvements on the property. The one that is, uh, resulting in the need for an expansion permit is a rear deck, uh, and family room along that non-conforming east side property line. Though their current structure is at its closest eight-point-nine feet, on the prop, the house is not actually exactly aligned with the property line. So at this point of the property, it's actually nine-point-five feet away from the property line, so they are going to be improving the non-conformity, even through, though they are adding on to the rear of the property. Uh, the larger project also includes additional improvements, uh, all of which are conforming, so that includes a front entry porch, some cantilevers in the front, a basement expansion, a garage addition, and a guest bedroom and bonus room over the garage. So I'm not gonna walk through those elements, uh, because they're not what the need, reason is for the request. You can see those in the application materials, and certainly if there are questions, uh, we can talk about it. Um, this is a low-density residential guidance. Uh, again, this is being proposed to continue to be used as a single-family property. Uh, this is an R-one-A lot. I think the last two potentially were R-one lots, so slightly different standards. Uh, this was created as part of a nineteen ninety-nine minor subdivision, so it is not a lot of record, uh, which is part of the reason for some of the standards being different as well. Building height is the same, uh, the front yard, twenty feet, they are meeting that requirement, and they have met that requirement. The side yard setback for this side of the property is ten feet. Um, and they believe that they were originally thinking it was less than that, but because it is a non-lot of record, then it is held to the standard, uh, of ten feet. Um, as I said, they are proposing a lot of different expansions. The one that we are really here for is in the rear property yard. Um, and so that includes an expansion, an addition, um, and then a deck. Uh, and so those will be, this is where it is closest at this point, at eight-point-nine feet. Uh, the, the house isn't exactly aligned to that property line, so by the time it reaches this rear point, it's nine-point-five feet. By the time we reach the rear deck, it's nine-point-seven feet. So, um, it is an expansion permit because we are in the setback area, uh, but they aren't making it worse, which is why it's not a variance. Uh, I do wanna note again, we've been having a lot of fun lately, Sarah and I, about bluffs. So this lot is not a bluff. Um, the reason it becomes important that we wanna mention it to you is because the original survey said it was a bluff. Uh, but then we have gone back and the current surveyor has verified it is not a bluff based on the standard. And the city engineer has reviewed the applicants and, uh, surveyors and confirmed that he doesn't think it's a bluff either. It becomes important because you have a top of bluff setback, and so then it becomes important because if you do have a bluff, then the family room has to be setback so many feet from it. Since it is not a bluff, we are only being held to the fifty-foot standard. So, if I could have not gone through all of that, I would've, but because it was something that was of question and actually the applicant and staff spent a number of weeks back and forth trying to make sure we knew what was happening, um, I needed to tell you it. So hopefully that made sense. Uh, the maximum impervious surface, as you know, for a non-lot of record is thirty percent. Uh, the existing hardcover on the site is at forty-eight-point-four percent. They're actually proposing a reduction down under, um, that thirty percent maximum to twenty-nine-point-eight percent. They're achieving it a variety of different ways. Um, they are gonna replace the Batuminous driveway with permeable pavers. Um, as I think you're aware, there's a reduction, it's not a hundred... Um, as I think you're aware, there's a reduction. It's not a hundred percent, but there is a reduction, uh, in what we consider impervious. They're gonna remove the paver patio in the rear yard. They're removing a concrete walk on the western side, and then also the deck, if it is, uh, has the quarter inch spacing, nothing underneath is considered impervious. So kinda the red highlights show, uh, where some of those things are located. So they will be improving hardcover as a result of the project. Uh, as I said before, they're doing a general redesign. Everything is gonna be conforming. Uh, the low floor elevation is going to be matching, uh, above the nine thirty-three at nine fifty-two point three. So all of the other additions, I'm not gonna really walk through, um, because they are all conforming and but for this project, you wouldn't have seen, uh, any of the building permit information for those requests. Uh, we did distribute this as typical and we didn't receive any comments. I don't have anything else other than the standard. Here's where we walk through the process and then we've practiced it two other times, so I can answer any questions that you may have, um, to clarify the project.
Okay, questions for Rita? Hearing none. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, do we have anybody in the audience who would like to approach the commission regarding this proposal? Yes, sir. You state your name and your address.
Max Windmiller, two-four-five Ridgeview Drive, Wayzata, Minnesota. I am the architect for the project. I work closely with the homeowners and the builders. Homeowner is here as well, and our design team is here, and then our builder is here as well, so. Thank you so much for the project introductions. Thank you for your help. Uh, we worked really hard to take a condition that the owner inherited. The house is skewed on the lot as was stated. Uh, our, our goal really is to be sensitive to the lot and to the conditions that, uh, we inherited here, so the only variance is on the lakeside and we feel that it'll be, the impact will be greatly minimized from the street, so it, it really won't be anything that, uh, that would be noticed. Uh, as we're restating the whole house, this is part of a larger addition as has been mentioned, so this piece in the back should feel very seamless. It's not our intention to do something wildly different where it looks strange from the lakeside. We really want this to integrate well and just improve the overall aesthetic. And a drastic, uh, reduction in hardcover is also proposed, uh, which is, uh, I think good news for everybody.
Okay, questions for Mr. Windmiller? Hearing none, thank you.
I do have one quick one. I know that staff reached out to neighbors and received no response. I'm just curious if you folks have had any communication with the neighbor to the northeast-ish, mostly east, I guess that would be?
Not me personally. We could ask the owner if he's had any discussions, but, uh, no letters or communication.
Sorry, I think somebody else.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Windmiller. Does the owner wanna approach the commission for any reason? Okay, anybody have any questions for the owner?
Have you had any contact with the neighbor?
And we'll need your name and address, sir. It's our protocol.
Pat Pellstring, fifty thirty-two Edgewater Drive. Yes, they received a letter and, uh, we talked to neighbors on both sides and they were fine. They've been well aware of what we've been doing, what our plans are, so as of yet, uh, I think it's all thumbs up, so.
Okay, further questions for the owner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion amongst commission?
Now, I just...
Hearing none. Uh, you see on page thirty-nine of your packet that staff has recommended approval of planning case two-four dash one-two. They have nine conditions and five findings of fact. You also have the other two options that we've seen tonight several times. All that said, chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the expansion permit for remodel, house addition, planning case twenty-four twelve with the nine conditions and findings of fact on page thirty-nine forty.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Now, I just, I really like it when people improve their houses. Um, it, it's just, it's good for the neighborhood. It's good for the property values. It's good for everybody, so I have no issues with this at all. Agreed.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And again, uh, sir will advise as to this recommendation wanted to city council, correct?
Yes, we're gonna try and do August twenty-seventh, uh, rather than the September, but we just have to see where tomorrow morning falls in and if we all can get our work done because it gives us one morning to turn everything and that includes resolutions, reports, minutes, notices. We're gonna try.
Okay, moving on, uh, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, crew.
Oh, Planning Commission term expiration.
Great.
We have three members, uh, whose terms expire at the end of the year. Mr. Good, Mr. Heel, and Mr. Rosener. Uh, all of your terms expire, uh, on December thirty-first and, uh, I think what we've done in the past is if you can let us know if you have interest in, in, uh, seeking reappointment, and I'll go back to our notes from last year. I don't recall, Maggie, do you? Did we send out the forms for them to fill out or is just them notifying us acceptable? Do you remember?
It was just not...
It was just notice, wasn't it?
I went through last year and I think it was notification.
It was just a notification, I guess.
So we can send you an email?
You can send me an email, yep.
Are you back in? Mr.?
No, don't open them on the spot.
And sooner than later because if we, if everybody's... If everybody is interested in staying with us, then, then we don't have to go through the, um, the process of...
The search process.
The search process and it's obviously, we don't wanna do that. That's not the point, but if we know that we don't have to, then we'll proceed in another direction, but just let us know, and I'll reach out to, to Nick as well.
Okay.
Kathy, what do you know?
Well, I actually have news that you might all enjoy hearing. This is in regards to the construction on fifteen.
Oh.
So it, it sounds like they're hopefully going to have it all complete before Labor Day. That, that's the first section, you know, through mound. Now, the flashing lights won't be quite done yet, but that whole area to cross will be. What is the... The, the lights are gonna be added within the next month or two, because phase two is that area right down across from, you know, like the drive-in as you get into. So that phase should be done by the end of October. There will, you, you'll still be able to get through it over there, but, um, it's gonna be smooth sailing through mound. Hopefully by the second, no later than the sixth.
So that big mound of dirt will be gone and...
Well, that's what we're hoping for.
All right. Great.
I, I thought everybody would like hearing that.
I know with some of the construction on that road, the, in the middle, they have these, I, I don't know if I even call it a center island. They're more like a square, but they're white and...
Oh, for the, for the crossing?
I don't know if they're gonna paint those or color those, and I'm not recommending that people do it. I don't know if it's a color issue or if people are colorblind, but I've seen more cars not see it and drive over it, like just dun-dun, dun-dun, dun-dun. I did it, I did it myself. It's very hard to notice it, and I don't know if it's a time of day thing, my own color blindness.
I think one's painted, the lines.
That's what I'm hoping. There should be some type of curb painting or something because it's, you see right out here. You pull out here and you see one, and I've seen cars pull out and just go bum-bum, bum-bum, bum-bum.
I'd like to do that because I don't like those.
Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna stay white or if there's gonna be any more distinguishing markers, but I have seen a lot of cars not notice it and just go right over it.
Yeah, well, it's just such a mess over there. You know, people are just...
I know there's one there and then there is one down by the, the drive-in.
Yeah.
That I've seen other cars kinda drive over.
Yeah, they will have.
Yeah, it's a weird thing to see. I've missed it a few times myself. I was that car.
They first put one in down by the Narrows. That was the first one they did down.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
You're right.
It took a while to get used to it. Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So I may, gave this to Mayor Holt as well. So in the next monthly newsletter, whatever it is, can you put what we're supposed to do when you go through the crossing, both by the old Dakota Junction and this new one?
I know.
Because I think there's a lot of confusion.
It, it's really...
It's a pedestrian crossing, and I've seen like bikers go through and put the stop sign up to tell people to move.
That, that's been my concern all along because I think it's created even a, a bigger problem.
Yeah.
Because they, they've always had a stop sign on the trail.
Yes.
I think they should make that stop sign gigantic. I wouldn't trust, you know, that's such a busy street right there with the, with the, a curb and then the light by Walgreens.
There's just a lot of stuff coming on there too.
And again, that's County Road one-ten, so...
Pedestrians have the right of way, but bikes still do not. I, I don't think that, if there's a crosswalk painted, that might...
If it's a crosswalk, it's a crosswalk.
But it's a pedestrian crosswalk. But by Dakota Junction, there's no crosswalk painted in the road.
No, there's no crosswalk.
So I don't think that cars retain the right of way. But now there's a sign up that says pedestrian bike crossing.
There, there will be crosswalk painted.
It will be painted.
Okay, then at that point, that changes then.
Yes, again, I, I agree with everybody. I think it's even more dangerous now because the, now that the bikers, mostly it's bikers that we're concerned about.
Yes, I do, yeah.
You know, they just race right through it, and if there's a car that's turning out right there.
Yeah.
I think it's dangerous and I think it's going to be revisited, but for now, there's still a stop sign on the trail. We are supposed to stop if we see a biker, you know.
We are supposed to stop if we see a biker.
Yes, that's the new sign.
But I thought...
I always thought there would be. I didn't know there was a difference between a pedestrian versus a bike.
So what I, what I was told from Hennepin County was if a biker walks his bike across...
Well, but that, that's just nonsense.
But it's, it's a pedestrian crossing, not a bike crossing. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's true.
I don't think that's true.
Only because I deal with this stuff a lot. Minnesota law says a person lawfully operating a bicycle across a roadway or shoulder while using a crosswalk has all the rights and duties applicable to a pedestrian.
Yeah.
So a bike and a pedestrian are the same in a crosswalk.
And that's the confusion for everybody.
But it's not a crosswalk, it's a pedestrian crossing. I think once they paint it, it becomes a crosswalk.
It, it'll be a crosswalk once they put the white lines.
Well, let's get them down because it is dangerous.
That's why I would like, I would like this all just laid out in the newsletter.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea.
I think it is too. We can put it on the website too.
Yeah.
That's a really good idea.
It's a really good idea.
To put some information out about that.
Yeah, it's, it's a tricky, that, where the curve is, um, is tricky. I, I use it a lot and, I mean, I don't, I don't race through it, but I stop, you know, I cry a little bit, say a little prayer, and then I go.
Yeah, well, that's about it. You have to pray. You know, and you're looking both ways. See if a biker's gonna try to zoom through.
Jason, that's a good idea. I like that.
That is a good idea.
Very good idea.
We will do that. And put it on Instagram. We'll get it everywhere.
Okay.
We'll put you as the author.
No, I'm not the author.
No, I'm kidding.
You can be the author if you wanna write up some legal brief.
It's a great thing to bring up.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, Cap, anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Good news.
Sarah?
It's been a busy summer. Uh, Square of the Lakes was great, uh, well-attended, uh, helped by lots of people to pull off a great event. Um, special events have been very active this summer. We're kinda winding down. Um, however, we do have a fishing contest, uh, coming up on Saturday, uh, that uses Surfside Landing, or Surfside Park for their weigh-in station, and, and upcoming is the annual OLL, uh, Incredible Festival will be coming up in September. Uh, there is no dog days this year, um, and then we'll have a, probably a little bit of hiatus and then we'll go on to tree lighting. Uh, farmer's market's very active, um, uh, so we still have, uh, the market that'll go till, I think, the second week in October, I believe. We're busy as, as you can see Maggie's with us this evening. Um, our, our colleague Jen, uh, accepted a new position with the City of Arden Hills, so she left our, left our building a couple of weeks ago. We miss her, but we certainly wish her well. Maggie was kind enough to help us with minutes tonight because we knew, um, we had three cases and we knew that because it's August that folks wanna move things on as quick as we can, so that's kinda the goal we're gonna try and accomplish between now and tomorrow. Other than that, we're very, very busy. Um, I think Maggie and I were talking. I think this has been one of the busiest summers we've had. Um, I don't know why. Um, just lots of permits, um, lots of building permits, lots of inquiries, lots of people wanting to do projects, lots of people interested in lots. Um, the, I'm amazed, the phone calls that, that we, we get and, and people that wanna buy houses and put additions on and all that, so it's, the real estate community is very active, uh, in mound, uh, and still is, and so we spend quite a bit of time, um, providing information, giving information, meeting with people, um, explaining development review, explaining the council introduction. Um, we are moving forward at your next meeting, uh, in two weeks. If it's two weeks, on the third, you will be seeing the public hearing and the application materials for the project that's called Minnetoka Flats. Lake Minnetoka Flats, that is the proposal for, uh, three buildings, uh, with four units of condos that is proposed for the addresses of twenty-four hundred and twenty-four twenty Commerce Boulevard. Uh, the council saw it, uh, as a council introduction several weeks ago. This'll be a major subdivision, preliminary plot, and a conditional use permit, uh, in a shoreline area. Um, lots of, lots of parts, wetlands, floodplain, hot county road, uh, lake shore, all those things, but the development team has been working, um, for numerous months to try and find a proposal that seems to work that, that they're comfortable with, so we will be holding a public hearing, um, and we'll see where that goes.
Sarah, I, I got the notice just tonight about that, and I, I tried to find the address. Is that gonna replace existing structures or does it fit in between in the green space that's there currently?
Yeah, right across from OLL.
It's down the hub, or the shed.
Yeah, it takes on the shed.
The shed goes out, okay.
Yeah.
But the building that's constantly being remodeled just to the south of that?
No, that, that's, that doesn't include that.
Yeah, and we, well, I think, we have talked about it, yeah, but we'll be putting something on the website too, you know, so people will be able to view information in advance. We, we normally do that on the bigger projects. But that, that, I, at least right now, I think that's our only land use case, doesn't mean that we won't. Rita and I may have some things, um, to bring forward. Uh, other things, the council at their last meeting, uh, last Tuesday did approve, uh, the conditional use permit for the library. There was, uh, additional information provided. Uh, they did drop the building height.
Two feet.
Two feet.
Wow.
Um, they did follow up with investigating whether or not parking could be accomplished on the Bellaire side. Um, with, uh, we talked to the engineer, they looked at it. That, that was not something that could be, could be modified without perhaps affecting the, the stormwater, uh, plan as well as the rain gardens and also adding potential hardcover. Um, and then they also shared information, uh, about their, um, interim library and, and how those, uh, discussions are, are moving forward and that they are, are also continuing the discussions with, uh, the church.
Yes.
For shared parking. Um, so a lot of the questions that were, were requested of the applicant team from the county, uh, was provided, uh, to the council. The council ultimately did recommend approval of the library.
Was there any review or, um, clarity for the resident on the tree?
Yeah. Yeah, they did a shadow study, um, and, uh, met with the property owner, I understand, and, and as I said, they dropped, they dropped the building height two feet, um, and then they...
I think there's still some question about whether the trees will survive or not because when you do construction, you're including the drip line.
Yeah.
But they had, uh, a conversation with the applicants and tried to address what they could.
And then they also, uh, there was discussion about drainage in and around, um, shared property lines, and, uh, that also was talked about in terms of what, how that rainwater garden will function, where, if it gets high water, where it's gonna overflow, and where the existing drainage is going because there was concern from, uh, property owner as well, so the city engineer was kind enough to provide an overview, which was, which I thought was very, very helpful for, for the folks, so, so that project will be moving forward. I think they said it's next year though, right? Construction is in twenty twenty-five, right?
And that shadow study was really interesting to look at too.
They were not able to, um, accommodate a remote book drop. Information was provided, uh... They were not able to accommodate a remote book drop. Information was provided that their operation standards, that's not something that they do anymore because of liability and staffing. There will be a book drop in the lobby, but they're not going to have a remote one, and so that's just not, that's not current policy for Hennepin County's library system, and they explain that to the council as well.
Too bad. What about the restaurant that was supposed to go into Commerce Place?
It's in my mind.
Do you know anything about that?
It's in my mind. I was going to ask it.
I know that they are working on, under some current permits, and there's a big permit that's waiting to be issued. I checked in with them a couple of weeks ago, and they were waiting for some of the space to be made available, because that's going to be included in their SAC determination, because they have, in order to proceed, they got to pay that, and I think that's going to offset some of that, so I'm hoping soon.
The council asks every meeting about that restaurant.
About the restaurant?
And also about...
A store area charge from MCVS.
Exactly.
So, and when you add seats and you go from something like retail to restaurant, the charges are quite heavy in terms of what that SAC unit is like one residential unit, so it's that times whatever that gives you what that increases, and so that's part of the process. So we check in as much as we can, but they're working under existing permits, and everybody's anxious to get...
Are there deadlines on those, or even deadlines on what we approved? Because it seems like it's been years.
Once the, once a conditional use permit is approved, it's of record.
Okay.
Yeah. So even if I don't do it, Maggie could come in and do it as long as it's the same. If something comes, something is substantially different, then they'd have to come back for an amendment, but they are making, they are making progress. It's just, I think, not as quick as we'd all like to see.
Okay. Further issues?
I'd like to, what you were bringing up with the events. In lieu of dog days this year, because of the uncertainty, you know, it takes months to plan those things, and when they were building the new playground down at Surfside, there was a lot of uncertainty with due dates and, you know, things like that. So in lieu of it at Surfside, they're moving it this year to the actual backyard of the veterinary clinic, and it's called West Taka Pet Palooza.
Oh, cute.
And it's going to be on September 8th from noon to 3:00, and there are prizes and fun food and things like that, but it'll be a reduced size of it, but they're still planning on a really fun event.
Okay. Anything else to be brought up?
Let me know if you have interest in reappointment. Email's fine.
Okay. Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.